Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Cablecast Post Agenda on Human Trafficking for Tuesday, February 25, 2025. For the record, we are joined today by Council President Pro Tem Bob Wilson, Finance Chair Councilwoman Strasburger, Councilwoman Barbara Warwick, and I'm sure others will be joining us soon or watching or participating via Zoom. Can you introduce yourselves for the public, please? And then we'll give you a chance to give a little synopsis of the work you do.
My name is Anna-Lisa Gibbs, and I am the founder and executive director of Eden's Farm.
My name is Kyla Christensen. I'm the Director of Peer Support and Clinical Lead at Eden's Farm.
My name is Stephanie Snyder. I'm a Supervisory Special Agent for Homeland Security Investigations.
Thank you. And Anna-Lisa, we're going to start with you about Eden's Farm, if you can give us a little synopsis of what they do, the work, the wonderful work that you're doing.
Thank you. So, good afternoon, members of Pittsburgh City Council and representative from Homeland Security and everyone watching at home. Again, my name is Anna-Lisa Gibbs, founder and executive director of Eden's Farm. And before I begin, I want to take a moment to recognize that just last month, we stood here in this very room to receive proclamation from Pittsburgh City Council designating January 28th as Eden's Farm Day during Human Trafficking Awareness Month. Thank you, Councilwoman Smith, for championing this cause and for caring enough to give us this platform today, a platform where we continue to bring this issue to the forefront. Before we begin, I want to take a moment to acknowledge the language that we're going to use when we discuss human trafficking. Language matters and it shapes how we see the issue, how we respond to it, and more importantly, how survivors experience it. First, when we use the term survivor, we use that instead of victim on our end whenever possible. While someone may have been victimized by trafficking, the word survivor acknowledges their strength, resilience, and autonomy. However, context is key, and in legal contexts, victim is appropriate. Ultimately, we encourage using the person's name and whatever they prefer to be called. Second, we avoid using language suggesting complicity or ownership. Survivors of trafficking are not prostitutes. They are individuals who are coerced, manipulated, or forced into a situation they never consented to. Instead, we use trafficked persons or persons who have experienced commercial sexual exploitation. And the term rescue and aftercare can be disempowering. It leads to a survivor complex and shifts focus away from survivor's own agency. We want to create an environment where survivors are empowered to make their own choices. And they are active agents in their own recovery. And as an organization, we will never say "our" survivors. Survivors do not belong to us. They lead their own journeys. Our role is not to dictate their paths, but to provide the tools and environment where they can reclaim their lives. So, I would like to explain to you what Eden's Farm does. We have four key components that we do. We conduct online community and street outreach. In the past, we, a significant percentage of trafficking today happens online, social media, dating apps, online marketplace. We build trust-based relationships with individuals experiencing exploitation. Outreach is about planting a seed and let somebody know that when they are ready, help is available. Sometimes it takes months or years for a survivor to reach out after their first conversation, but when they do, they know where to turn. Second is our drop-in center, which is a safe place for really immediate needs. We provide basic needs, clean clothes, meals, showers, even washer and dryer. We provide case management, whether it's help with recovering their ID, medical assistance, addiction recovery referrals, and safety planning. We also provide emotional support at community groups, which is a judgment-free zone where survivors are met with compassion and not shame. Third is we have a two-year residential program that is free of charge. Housing is one of the greatest barriers to freedom. Without safe housing, many survivors are forced to return to their traffickers' or exploitative situations simply to have a place to sleep. This is why our residential program exists. Again, it's free of charge, structured over two years, guiding survivors through four different phases. That's stabilization, healing, empowerment, and independence. Fourth, most recently, we have opened up a retail store in the West End here in Pittsburgh. We call it our Justice Enterprise Retail Store. Many survivors face significant employment barriers after exiting trafficking. Criminal records, employment gaps, PTSD, mental health issues make it difficult to find stable work. And without financial independence, survivors remain vulnerable to re-exploitation. So, in our store, you can learn job skills. We create handcrafted products like candles and home and body products. They get an employment history, which is a critical step towards long-term financial security. We do not believe in simply offering survivor-made products as charity. We believe in creating opportunities where survivors are seen as entrepreneurs, artisans, and business owners. And why does this all matter, right? And the word that comes to mind to us is sustainable freedom. We do more than just provide the services. We create pathways for survivors to thrive. We do not own their journeys. They lead it. We do not rescue survivors. We empower survivors to reclaim it. We do not tell them who they are. We support them as they rediscover their identity. And at Eden's Farm, we believe that real justice isn't about breaking these figurative chains. It's about making sure survivors never have to be bound to them again. Additionally, this past summer, we launched our Survivor Apprenticeship Program. And this is where I would like Kyla here to go into explaining it, as she's one of the facilitators of the program along with Sarah Neville.
At Eden's Farm, we believe that survivors must be the forefront of the fight because survivors know what they need. Their voices, experiences, their expertise are essential for shaping the policies and demonstrating against trafficking networks. Too often, decisions about survivors are made about them without them, and we're working on changing that. This belief led us to create the Survivor Apprenticeship Program, a 16-week stipend program designed to train survivors as trainers and consultants in human trafficking awareness. Our goal is to break down the economic and educational barriers while empowering survivors to contribute and share their expertise. Eden's Farm was one of 12 organizations selected in the Anti-Trafficking Leadership Innovation and Sustainability Atlas Project led by the Office of Trafficking in Persons National Human Trafficking Training and Technical Assistance Center. Through this program, we were selected based on our idea and proposal for a Survivor Apprenticeship Program. This Atlas Project provided us with funding, specialized training, and capacity building to support the idea and turn it into reality. We started this program with our first cohort in 2024. The overall objective was to train survivors to be trainers and consultants. In the 16 weeks, we covered six different courses: professional development, digital literacy, human trafficking law, trauma-informed approaches, business structures, and public speaking. And at the end, they trained a final project. It was really lovely, a comprehensive, two-hour human trafficking awareness training delivered to multiple organizations. These sessions were led by survivors, ensuring that the anti-trafficking education was informed by the world experience. And I just want to take one more second in a moment to like really celebrate the apprentices and their like effort and commitment. It takes a lot of courage to do that and to lead like that, and to witness their dedication is truly something you can't put words to. And the impact is almost immediate. Every conversation we have, every bit of awareness we share with the community can be life-saving, and everyone deserves access to that information. And together, we're ensuring that it reaches those who need it most from those who have been there. So, thank you for our apprentices, and thanks for the community for participating in that. And Lisa, we'll talk more about the success and the way that looks moving forward.
We'll hear from a little bit from Homeland Security first, okay?
Thank you.
And then you come back.
Thank you, Madam Councilwoman. Thank you for having me. As I said, my name's Stephanie Snyder. I am a Supervisory Special Agent with Homeland Security Investigations, HSI. HSI is one of the preeminent federal law enforcement agencies that investigates the crime of human trafficking. We investigate both sex trafficking and labor trafficking. Our approach, the HSI approach to combating human trafficking, is a victim-centered approach, which puts equal weight on the restoration and support of the victim as it does on the prosecution of any trafficker. As part of that victim-centered approach, HSI has an investigative team that works on these cases. So, it is our special agents and our criminal analysts, but also our victim-assistant specialists and our forensic interview specialists to bring a holistic approach to these investigations. We do not work these cases in a vacuum. It takes community partnerships. It takes our federal partners, our other state and local law enforcement task force officers, and our partnerships with NGOs like Eden's Farm. We, it takes the entire community coming together to combat these crimes. In addition to that, HSI really focuses on outreach regarding human trafficking and online safety. We have an iGuardian program that is available to teenagers as well as educators and parents to raise awareness about the risks of online exploitation and ways that traffickers are grooming and exploiting children online and leading them to in-person exploitation. So, our iGuardian program is a really key component of the outreach that we do to raise awareness to try to keep kids safe out of trafficking. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about our investigations.
Thank you. Did you want to follow up with anything else?
So, following up with what Kyla was saying with her Survivor Apprenticeship Program, graduates from the program this past summer have already trained local and federal organizations, including Gwen's Girls, Foster Love Project. They were a guest lecturer at Carlo's, Carlo University's Human Trafficking 101 course. They spoke at Operation 10, which is Western Pennsylvania's Anti-Human Trafficking Coalition, and also training the United States Attorney's Office in Western District of Pennsylvania. And that is a lot, right? And we do this with very little. Our first year, we operated on just $15,000. And yet, in that time, all of that time, we have housed survivors, provided jobs, and created space where people who were once discarded by society now have a place to belong. And we are the doers. We don't just talk about change. We create it. But we can't do this alone. So...
Thank you. Thank you all for your work, first of all, and it's such an important issue. So, I'm going to turn it over to, we'll start with Councilman Wilson. Did you have anything? You have to wait. Councilman Charlin, you have part of this in your district, correct? So, I don't know if you, I don't know what you can share, but did you want to say anything? Okay. Then, any members of council have any questions? Councilwoman Strasburg or Councilwoman Warwick?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you all for being here.
You actually have kids, so good for you to be here.
I...
You too.
Yeah, thank you all for being here. I appreciate it. I'm actually curious about sort of like the overlap between sex trafficking crimes and folks who are engaged in sex work, right? Whether that be consensual or whatever. I know that there can be gray areas. And if there are, just in your experience, whether it's with your clients, or I don't know if there's any data behind it, you know, what might be the barriers for folks to seek help when they need help? Or perhaps report when they know something is going on? Because I mean, I'm, again, I'm assuming, but I, that they're, that they're, these are communities that maybe pass each other somewhat closely, and so I'm curious about that. Whoever, whoever, yeah.
Sure, I'll start with that. So, some of the complex trauma that happens, we find that many people who end up victims of sex trafficking have complex histories of trauma, whether that be familial trauma that happened in their past, whether that's substance abuse trauma, or they themselves were victimized as children. That's a common theme that we've worked, that many of the people that we've worked with have had in their past, which leads them to being vulnerable to traffickers. And traffickers use manipulation and this brainwashing, if you will, to keep them, to keep their victims under their control. Sometimes that's through violence. Sometimes that's through substance addiction control. Sometimes that is through romantic manipulation. There's a variety of ways that traffickers will manipulate and control their victims. And in that process, the victims need to see a choice in order to be able to step out of that. So, having a trust in the legal system, having support systems that they can reach out to, having resources like housing, and, you know, someone who is going to help protect them. Oftentimes, people who have been trafficked may have a criminal history because of things that they were forced to do while being trafficked, which then precludes them from gainful employment and many other opportunities. So, there's a lot of reasons in addition to the psychological trauma that comes with being a victim of trafficking. And all of those become reasons that they're afraid to, they can be afraid to reach out.
So, what I've seen, let's say anecdotally and, you know, through my experience, is ultimately everybody we serve, either whether coming from a background of human trafficking or a background of commercial sexual exploitation, which is not trafficking, but still exists under the systems of exploitation. Again, to echo, there are a lot of past traumas. There are intersections of substance abuse, and that we have seen greatly here in Pittsburgh. There is an overlap of being a single mother. There is an overlap of poverty. In the past, a survivor told me poverty is a pimp. So, you will do whatever you can to survive, but then we need to step back and think, what are our structures? What are our support systems so that this doesn't become the last resort for somebody?
And I think I just want to add too, that it's a really great question in the fact that we can see them in the same setting. And there's an issue with like self-identifying, and because of that manipulation, people don't even perceive what they're doing as what's occurring, if that makes sense. And so, yeah, it's totally possible for, we could just talk about strip clubs, perhaps, that there to be, "I'm dancing" versus "I'm being made to dance." And it's hard to tell, and that's happening in the same spot. So, that's why you can't just look at somebody and know what the experience is.
I'm curious to, just in your, in your work, again, with these overlay, you know, these sort of among our unhoused population and how this, if this is, if this issue is impacting our unhoused population more? Or just in your experience?
I would say blanket statement here, in any times of crisis, exploitation increases. So, absolutely, our unhoused population here, that's one way of surviving, right? That's one way of eating, of making, having your needs met. And there will be people out there who will exploit on that opportunity.
And I would say that like that only is exacerbated with youth. There are statistics that, you know, obviously homelessness is a vulnerability. But then, when you have homeless youth who don't have that familial support system, the statistics show that they are 60% more likely to be trafficked than children who are in some other type of housing situation.
60%, oh, wow. Okay. And then I'm curious too, just about the housing. How many, how many, I guess, rooms or do you have, do you have capacity for at Eden's Farm?
So, currently, we are able to house four individuals over a span of two years, free of charge.
Okay, okay. I don't think I have any other questions at the moment.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman, and Councilman Wilson.
Thank you. Thank you, Council, Councilwoman.
Whatever my name is, just with thank you.
I was like going through like a merit as president. So, thanks, thanks for being here. Thanks for hosting this. And I had some questions around, I'm looking at a list of people, and I see Sheldon's on here. Is he in the audience? Is he coming up?
I don't know why he's on there.
I'm just joking.
Oh.
I was just going through the list of who maybe would I answer, but I was curious, maybe, maybe I guess you did a story on this previously or something.
I will say Sheldon Ingram from Channel 4, WTA, did a series of
Okay.
coverage on this issue. So, thank you for raising the awareness initially.
So, my questions are going to pertain to the current system we have, which is like, how in this, let me ask the broad question. How in the system do you come into interaction with someone who is being trafficked? Is that the correct term?
Yes, yeah. So, for law enforcement, it can be in a variety of ways. For local law enforcement, it could be responding to a 911 call. It could be responding to a noise disturbance call. It could be responding to a call at a hotel or a house where, you know, sex trafficking is occurring. For federal officers or agents, we do proactive operations to identify potential victims of human trafficking. We also work very closely with our state and local partners so that if they were to receive information on anything related to trafficking, they can contact us because we have a vast array of resources to support them in those investigations. And again, through our other partnerships and working with NGOs, we've built, you know, relationships that if an NGO or other social service agency were to come across a survivor of trafficking that was looking to speak with law enforcement, we want to have that relationship. We've also had, we received leads from the Polaris Project, the Polaris Tipline, which is the National Human Trafficking Hotline. So, any citizen, any person who's being victimized, in addition to law enforcement, can contact that hotline. And those leads are sent to local law enforcement based on geography. So, there's a whole host of different ways that we come in contact with victims.
Thanks for going through that. In terms of local law enforcement, you said on a 911 call. So, what is a scenario that could happen on a 911 call? Is it a 911 call because someone is in distress? Or is it just a 911 call because someone thinks that someone, someone else is doing something wrong? What's...
It could be a variety of those things. I'm just thinking back through cases that I've investigated. I have had local law enforcement officers contact me because of a stolen car case in which they responded to the scene where there was a report of a stolen car. And it was a victim who had taken the trafficker's car to escape the situation and left the car right at the side of the road, and it was a rental vehicle. I've also had calls where it was a disturbance call by the neighbors hearing shouting in the apartment next door. And when the officer responded, there was a scenario there that he felt had indicators of trafficking and reached out, and we were able to investigate that way. It really, it could be a domestic violence situation that often presents that way.
So, in the, in the case that there would be someone who's doing something sexual in nature, or believed to be that they would do that, and there is interaction with police, and say the person's arrested, how does that? How does that take place? How's that, is that a common thing that happens?
Are you asking?
Or is it all, you know, figured out before the arrest happens?
I guess I'm not, I'm not clear on what you're looking for.
So, say, okay, so we're here, I just want to get my bearings here. For human trafficking, how often do you identify that based on an arrest?
I would say that most often, trafficking is identified before an arrest for trafficking occurs. You know, the elements that we have to prove in order to make a human trafficking case is that force, fraud, or coercion was used to create a commercial sex act. So, the Commercial Sex Act is one piece of it, but then we have to show that force, fraud, or coercion induced that Commercial Sex Act. And the person profiting off of that, and that profit doesn't have to be money. Profit could be, you know, a multitude of things. Whoever's profiting off of that could, is your trafficker. Or if the person being victimized that's engaging in the Commercial Sex Act is a minor, it's automatically human trafficking, and we don't have to prove the elements of force, fraud, or coercion. So, it's, it's a, the Commercial Sex Act can happen, but we have to prove those elements as part of making that case for every adult.
Okay. So, if there's, how does that interaction take place? Like the, if that's, if that's all taken care of before an arrest?
So, a lot of it is based on...
Who's involved with that?
A lot of it is based on the interview with the survivor of trafficking. Their statement gives us the information on the actions of a trafficker. And then our, our job as investigators is to corroborate or prove the elements that have happened. So, you know, if the victim tells us that something happened at a hotel, then we're going to, you know, investigate that further.
But what makes them our client to talk to, to you?
Our victim-centered approach and the way that we do our interviews are often by our well-trained forensic interview specialists. We also have victim-assistance specialists who have the NGO relationships so that we can, if they have substance abuse challenges, that we can offer access to recovery houses or rehabilitation and treatment. We work with other NGOs if they need housing or medical care or legal services. Whatever it is, we're going to partner and make those referrals so that they are able to receive those services. Sometimes they're not ready to talk, and that's the challenge of this case, is that in order to prosecute, successfully prosecute a human trafficking case, you almost always need a victim who's willing and able to get on the stand and testify against their trafficker. And in the federal system, that's a long process. Even in the state system, it's very, very challenging. So, being able to provide those services so that the victim can get on the road to becoming a survivor and recover and try to rebuild their life is a crucial part of it, and that's why our victim-centered approach is so crucial.
I might have some more questions.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you. I didn't want to stop someone else from helping to answer that question if you wanted to, but yeah, absolutely.
Can I just add something to that? I think it's a really good question, and not to like oversimplify it. It's that aspect of self-aligning, right? The victim doesn't maybe always or hardly ever really know that that's happening. And so, what I've seen sometimes is in interview process and other advocacy processes, there's like a journey of self-discovery and being like, "Whoa, that happened to me. Whoa, I need to do something about that." Rather than, because the complexity of knowing and asking and the trafficking comes into the intersectionalities that we kind of talked about, right? The IPV, the drug and alcohol, the mental health, all of those things look different, I might offer, if we have the training and awareness to go in all the fields so that mandated reporters and people can see those things and make quick referrals and say, "Hey, someone's got to get their eyes on that." Because oftentimes, the people in the trenches experiencing it aren't going to know to ask for help, aren't going to feel safe to ask for help, aren't going to know they can ask for help.
Well, thank you all for being here, for the work that you do every day. Thanks to Councilwoman Kail Smith for holding this important post-agenda hearing. We held our citywide public safety meeting just a few weeks ago, and I attended. It was on sex trafficking, human trafficking, and it was a really important topic, really difficult to listen to because some of our local police and FBI investigators were, who do, you know, heroic work work in this regard, were providing some specific examples in Pittsburgh and how they were able to track down exactly what was happening. So, you know, from, from previous post-agendas and from conversations, I also know that large sporting events are a prime... Post-agendas and from conversations, I also know that um, large sporting events are prime kind of opportunities for. Those who want to exploit or traffic other humans, um. And we have the NFL Draft coming up in Pittsburgh. Um, and I'll ask this question, and I don't know if there are other people planning to come up to the table, but I'll ask this to everyone. Um, if they do come up as well, like. From your vantage point, what are, what are some of the things that the city should be thinking about, the county, any organizer who's part of this effort, the NFL? I'm assuming, I'm hoping, seriously hoping that the NFL has some policies or protocols in place as well. What, what can we do to um? To uh, ensure that people are, are safe and are attending the, the events um? In a, in a city that has their back?
I would say um. Really seek out first to receive training. Um, we provide training uh, to know what to look for. Right, if you don't, if you don't know what to look for, then really it's on blind eyes. Um, and who to refer people to. Um, we have resource cards um, that have numbers for all of the organizations and agencies that provide housing. Um, and aftercare for survivors um, that we can provide, but. Um, but with that said, if you're offering, uh, we would love to, you know, come up with a strategy. Of how to get that information um, available to the public.
One of the things that HSI recommends is outreach and awareness raising around larger-scale events. Um, we find that, you know, people are trafficked on any given day in this city, so. You know, these events are just opportunities for um, us to really raise awareness around the issue. Um, putting the phone numbers out there for the various hotlines, for law enforcement contacts, for social service contacts. And kind of giving some of those red flag indicators so that if people see something, they can say something, and again, um, just to echo knowing who to call. Um, and putting, putting that out there to raise awareness.
Ask further questions internally and with other partners and, and get something going, I think that's a really important part.
That's a great question. Councilman Charlan?
Yeah, uh, thank you for, for being here and um, you know, this is. Uh, a very heavy topic and I, you know, very much appreciate that you're able to. Stay in a topic as heavy as this where I think others might uh, shy away. Um. I, I have a couple of questions here. You mentioned there's a difference between commercial exploitation and sex trafficking, and I think it's just a definition thing, uh, but could you just explain that to me?
Correct, so um. Again, in our training, what we've created is if you view it as the umbrella is commercial sexual exploitation. And that can split off into trafficking, which is sex trafficking. And also um, other systems and survivals that would cause people to uh. Whether they do pornography or um, strip clubs or anything like that. And the difference is that on this end, there's no force, fraud, and coercion, and on the other end there is. But ultimately, those two are under the umbrella of commercial sexual exploitation.
Good, thank you, I, I appreciate the distinction uh. Education here. I, I'm curious, you know, and I, I know that this is a global issue. Um, but we are Pittsburgh City Council, so are, are there, I'm not asking you to identify. Individual uh, locations, but are there locations where you're looking for this more often, or you're seeing this more often? Um. Is there something that you're, you're looking for, or, you know, that you see? That is something kind of local that we can understand?
I honestly don't think that um. There's as much out in the open anymore, the internet has really changed the game, you know, if. I, I'm not from Pittsburgh, but you know, as far as street prostitution is concerned. That is, um, has mostly gone online. So there are commercial, uh, there are websites that are geared to selling commercial sex. And that's where buyers, um, sex buyers are going to go and go to those websites. And arrange to meet at a hotel or a private residence or other location in order to. Buy sex, and so traffickers are advertising um, what they're selling on these commercial sex websites. So it really is happening anywhere and everywhere, um, and it's, you know, the internet has made it much more anonymous and much more difficult to. To track and to, to prevent.
I, I mean. I represent East Carson Street, um, you know, I. We've got fifteen massage parlors up and down, that's something that people always ask me, I was like, like, what are we doing to, to look through the, them, and. I, I certainly don't know. Is, is there like proactive enforcement of, of some of those hotspots taking place, is that? Something that anyone does? Maybe something you can't answer, as I'm saying out loud, I realize that maybe that's not a, not something that. You wanna talk about?
I can't answer that specifically, but what I can tell you is that um, one of the ways that we do try to. Um, locate and identify trafficking is through types of proactive investigations. Um, and, and part of that is really the partnerships with our state and local task force officers. Um, who have the ability to utilize um. City ordinances and, and different regulations within um, different areas.
Uh, and then, I guess the other thing that, you know, bringing you back local. That I'm always concerned about when we have these post-agendas with these, these huge issues are like, what can we do locally? Like, wha, what is, what can we do to help um, on the, the most local level? I think um. You know, I think the, the point is well-taken that, you know, when we've got people in, in need, they're gonna be the first to um, be exploited, so. Working with people in need just broadly is probably one of the things. But what, a, a, anything else that we can do locally that, you know, you wish that we did, or whatever it might be?
So I've outlined here. Four, really, four key points that I feel as a city um, we can do. Again, back to awareness and training, that is paramount. Healthcare workers, local law enforcement, educators, and general public um, must be trained to recognize these signs. Um, many survivors interact with these professionals, right, who are missing the warning signs. Um, and second, I feel as though um, stronger policies and victim-centered approaches. Uh, we need policies that ensure that survivors are not criminalized for their victimization. Uh, this includes expanding vicature laws that allow survivors to clear records of crimes committed uh, while under duress. Um, survivors should not be punished for their own victimization. Um, others are economic opportunities and housing. Um, because our housing would not fit uh, everyone. You know, we, we need a variety of housing and different housing styles. Uh, if we want survivors to thrive, uh, we need more long-term housing solutions. Um, and also economic pathways that'll allow them to build independent lives. Um, and I feel a cultural shift, right, because demand feels trafficking. So until we address the demand side of it, whether it's for commercial sex or exploitative labor. Uh, we'll continue to see uh, trafficking persist. Um, and this is not just about uh, law enforcement, this is about shifting our mindset really as a society. And we must ask those hard questions, uh, who's benefiting from the trafficking? Who's being held accountable for the trafficking? And, and feel like until we address these issues, the cycle will just continue.
So, you know, I think the framework that I use for, for a lot of these questions are. That Pittsburgh's not the first, it's not the last city. We're not a special snowflake. We're, we're like a lot of other cities. But what other ci, are there other policies from other cities that you've seen that have worked really well that we can steal? Um, or things that are, have actually worked really poorly and we shouldn't go down that road?
If I'm not mistaken, New Hampshire just passed um, charging buyers. With it, and I think Maine was the first, um, it's what's called the equality model, so basically we're holding the traffickers. And um, the buyers accountable while not charging uh, the survivor. So, yeah, Maine was the first, um, and I really think it was this past week that New Hampshire.
And that's on a statewide level?
Statewide.
Yeah. Uh, anything on the municipal level that you've, you've seen that's worked well or poorly anywhere else?
Not on the municipal level, um, and perhaps that's just because I haven't been exposed to it, you know?
Sure, yeah. Not, not everyone uh, looks through what all other cities are doing, but uh, that I think we do a lot of that here, so I, I. I would just be curious if you've got any good examples or, again, bad examples as well. Um, if you could send them our way, that, that's helpful to know. Um, we have a very convoluted uh, legal process here in Pennsylvania with. You know, uh, us as a second-class city, we can, can do some things, we can't do other things. Um, but we can always try, we can uh, get some smart people to look at. How to make these pieces fit, so. Um, you know, I, I would certainly be open to that, I think we all would. Well, I, I thank you so much for being here today, might have some further questions, but really, really do appreciate it.
Anything else from members at this moment? Um, I just wanna thank you all, I wanna thank my colleagues for being out here too, they work all day and then they will all go to evening things, so it's around the clock. People think, oh, they only meet twice a week, but the reality is they meet for a lot of stuff. As I'm getting ready to retire, I'm going to less, not more. But, but I wanna thank them for coming out here and doing the things that they're, that they're doing. Um, but I, and I obviously wanna thank all of you for the work that you do. I just have a few things, can you give us some tips on what parents might be able to do, especially with online predators? I worry about that because I'm always, I'm a grandmother now of eight, and so I do worry about that kind of stuff, and um, I just wonder like, what people can look for? In terms of like, you know, a parent or guardian? Uh, I don't know who wants to go with that, would you please go with that?
Absolutely, um, one of the biggest things is having open communication. Um, open communication, talking to kids about the dangers of online predators and kind of what can happen, knowing that. What things that they post online are there forever, that their internet, uh, you can't just delete something and, and have it be gone. So photos that get out on the internet aren't easily removable, um, they should um. You know, just having those conversations about the risks that exist is one of the best ways parents can help keep their kids safe. Also educating uh, themselves about the apps and things that kids are using, um, you know.
I'm gonna be clear, the parents need to educate theirself on what the apps are to the kids, okay, I just wanna be clear.
Absolutely, like knowing how to navigate Roblox or Minecraft or any, any, any game or app that your kid is using. Um, you should know how to utilize it yourself and understand where the, the um. Uh, safety protocols are, so turning off the location information, talking to your child about not sharing identifiable information, whether that be. Uh, making sure that they're not sharing their real name, not sharing their city they live in, not sharing what school they go to. Uh, making sure that as they post pictures, they're not posting pictures that identify their school, so no school mascots or things like that, that. Um, could help a, a predator identify that child or, or identify the location of that child. Um, the other pieces uh, that go along with that are just, you know, cyberbullying and talking to kids about, you know, the um. Uh, again, the permanency of things that you say through that phone, so if you wouldn't say it to somebody's face, you don't say it through. A text message or some other messaging app. Um, uh, again, our iGuardian program, if you, if you Google iGuardians, there's a lot of um, resources on.
Is it I, the letter I?
The, the letter I, little I, and then the word guardian. Um, NCMEC's website, the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children, um, N C M E C. They also have a ton of great resources for parents to talk to their kids and videos online to show kids. Um, kind of the risks and potential things, but um, you know, HSI's iGuardian program, they will come uh, out to schools or parent groups or. Things like that to give these presentations for both youth. We have different presentations for um, teenagers and then a different presentation for adults and educators. Um, really, just having that line of dialogue with, with children to make them aware of the potential risks is one of the most valuable tools that parents have.
Just wanna say something to that. Thank you so much for that.
And recently, um, we've also seen because of sharing of images, um, that there's been instances of deep fakes, so. Um, that's putting a minor's uh, image onto a body, so that's been happening as well.
So, I will say that I do know of some kids, their parents do watch the things that they do, you know, all that kind of stuff. But I know of someone recently who was going to meet a person, because he thought that this was an innocent person, but I remind them of the story of Alicia Kozakovic. Who I thought was gonna be here today, so I apologize that she's not, not here. But um, when she was young, she thought she was talking to someone online. And she showed us a picture of who she thought she was talking to, and in reality, it was a man who abducted her. And um, raped and tortured her for days until the FBI came in and rescued her, so. I, I, I think that you think you're talking to somebody, kids, kids really feel like, they're so personal, and they, they do a grooming before they. So I, can you talk a little bit about any of that, but, but how they might groom somebody and, or get to know them? In a way that makes the kid feel confident, I, I should've invited somebody for mental health stuff, I'm sorry.
We see it a lot in um, online gaming platforms and, and um, social media platforms where. You know, all of a sudden a predator will create a, a fake profile posing as someone who is the same age as the person that they're targeting. Um, and uh, have a, a profile picture up there, making them seem like they're a different person. And through gradual likes and messages and chatting and. It's a, it's a long, drawn-out process often to groom and build trust.
Yeah.
Um, with the potential victim. Um, we see a lot of cases of sex extortion where the predator posing as someone else will ask. Uh, build that trust and then ask the victim to share sexually explicit images of themselves. Um, you know, po, portraying themselves as being in love, um, or in some type of relationship with the child. Um, when the child sends pictures back to the predator, now the predator says, well, you're gonna continue to send me pictures. Um, or I'm gonna post these all over social media, or I'm gonna send these to your parents, and it becomes this extortionate. Um, uh, predatory relationship where now the victim doesn't know where to turn. They're afraid of going, they could be afraid of going to their parents for fear of getting in trouble, um, and they're in this. Uh, really, really, really difficult situation, and our advice to parents is to have those conversations before. Anything like that could ever happen, so that if something like that does happen to your child. Your child has the confidence and trust in you to be able to bring that to your attention, so you can take that and report it to law enforcement.
So I'll just say, um, yeah, this is an issue that's bothered me since, since I've, before I got into office, because I knew Alicia, um, or know Alicia. And, and I do have a cousin who's missing, and I talk about that sometimes, and she's been missing for fifteen years. Um. But one of the things that bother me is I watch a lot of. Things happening, and it does happen in our neighborhoods, and we are seeing things, and people are reporting stuff. But one of the things that bother me, and people are gonna like that I say this, but um, I remember when I was first elected, somebody said to me. Um, who I thought was involved in some of this stuff, and he said, you're never gonna get us because we give to both Republicans and Democrats, and we make sure we cover ourselves. In the judicial system and with the police and with everyone else. So it, I fear that there's no. I honestly feel like there's no answer or no help for people sometimes, because even the people that want to help are unable to help. Because their hands are tied because of politics, a lot of politics. Um, but I do wanna share information because that is available for the help and response to get people. Um, out of a situation that they need to get out of. But mostly I wanna try to avoid situations, and, and I really think it's really important for parents to be a parent and not to allow their kids. Onto apps and onto things that they shouldn't be on, and if they feel like it's a safe one, and they feel like they've told them all the rules and all they got, you still have to check. Because they're kids, and they're gonna, they're gonna get in, into situations sometimes. And sometimes it, you know, it, you're not there to be their friend, you are there to be their parent, and sometimes they need you. And I will say that one of the people that I've worked with over the years came to me and said something like. Um, had her parent done some of the things uh, that were preventive. Then she would not have been in the situation she was in, so I think it's really important for parents to realize your kids want you. They may fight you, you know, may give you a hard time, they want you to be the parent, they want you to protect them, they want you to make sure that they're safe. No, they don't want you to tell them they can't be on some app or something, but in the end, you're the parent, and their safety is more important than anything. And one day, one day they will appreciate that, and believe it or not, now that I have adult kids, the. And believe it or not, now that I have adult kids, they'll implement that with their own kids. So they'll imitate what you do. So you'd, you'd be surprised, though they hate what you do when they're young, but then do it when they're older because they appreciate those things. But I do, I do worry about organized crime and, and how that role plays in, in this, the part in the city of Pittsburgh. Because everybody, you know, likes to talk like everything's, you know, safe and everybody's great and there's no such thing as organized crime, there's no such thing as, you know, everything's clean and good in, in the region. But the reality is it's everywhere and I worry about what part that plays in some of this stuff and um, I want to make sure that our law enforcement and p- and organizations that are doing things to help people have that ability to really help people the way that um, the way that people need you to. Could you share contact information again? Could you share um, the numbers they can call for any type of help in the national? We're gonna put these on our li- online as well so that people have access to them. Uh, but what we need is the um, the hotline number and any other numbers you feel are really important and relevant. Um, to, you want to, do you want to give it? Sorry. Thank you.
Sure. So um, the uh, HSI tip line phone number uh, is eight six six three four seven two four two three, and I'll leave this flyer with you. Um, and the Polaris Project hotline is um, eight 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 three seven three seven eight eight eight.
Thank you very much. And did you have any numbers you want to share, any contact information?
So our website is www.edensfarm.org. And on there you can um, the application for housing is on there. Um, and a little uh, contact information to submit, you know, any questions or anything is also on there. Our phone number is four one two nine zero three seven one seven seven.
And it's Eden's, E D?
E D E N S F A R M.
F A R M, one word. Okay, thank you. Anything else from members? So with that said, I just want to thank you all for the work you do and to keep raising awareness. And that, my mission for the next year before I leave is gonna be to continue to raise awareness around issues around children and um, abuse, abduction, any, any way we can to make sure kids are safe in the city of Pittsburgh. Um, one of the things I will say that I think we should do on a local level is provide training for those who have field permits on what they could look for. A lot of times our kids are raised and working on the streets with the kids, uh, people in the community. Um, and they're the ones who can do this kind of stuff. So I think maybe we should put something in place with permits for the fields that we provide some types of trainings and I, you know, when I used to run an athletic association, we should train for uh, well, we did clearances, but we also trained for, you know, no one-on-ones and um, also how to handle, handle a field emergency, how to talk to the psychology of the game and how to talk to kids to inspire them instead of putting them down and that kind of stuff. And we, you know, we did all sorts of trainings like that to help coaches. This could be a part of that um, as we do it together. So I hope together we can work through doing something like that. Um, and that you can provide us some of that information or we can get some of that great training. That said, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.